Eleven o'clock and we will begin our work session, call this meeting to order. This is our eleven o'clock work session in preparation for our meeting on August the second, which will be next Tuesday at five thirty. So we have a couple of things to do today and one is the proposed final plan for the Main Street redesign and redevelopment. We've got Kim Lee Horn with us and they've brought the entire team with us, with them today to present to us and so they will go into some measure of depth so that the board can consider it and then consider it over the weekend for hopefully a final determination on Tuesday. It is on the agenda for proposal for moving forward, for a vote for moving forward. So I will turn it over to you guys, who's going to lead off? Is that going to be you Henry?
Yeah, we're just all going to kind of stand if that's okay. We've got a plan.
Come right ahead and if you would just for purposes of information, just introduce everybody please sir.
Absolutely. So thanks board for letting me be here today. I always enjoy coming down and talking about this project. We all have worked great dialogue today. Henry Minor with Penninghorn, National Architect, project managing with Owen Harris, National Architect also Penninghorn, and then our team traffic engineer, Art Bailey as well. So wanted to give you all an update on just kind of what, what we've been doing over the last several weeks since the last event, kind of where's the progress we've made and we'll kind of walk through, Owen will walk through the plans, kind of show, show you where we are. We took our kind of typical black and white engineering plans and we added some color to help things be a little more visible and obviously about what the provisions are. So we'll go through that and obviously anytime please feel free to stop us if you have any questions. But really the focus of our efforts over the last several weeks have been aimed at refining the plan and the layout. And so to do that, we took our colored rendering, the concept that we've been looking at since, you know, last October and we implemented that and drew it onto the actual topographic survey that we had done, really detailed survey of the issue corridor. And so through that process, one of the things that we were able to really improve was the amount of parking that was going to be lost. So before, what we've been talking about all along was that in the kind of what we have been calling the core downtown area, which is from City Hall down to kind of the Reed's, Regent's Bank area right there. Before, what we, what we felt like we were going to end up doing was losing about sixteen parking spaces in that stretch. We reduced that down to now we're only losing seven parking spaces in that stretch. And that's right along, along Main Street with the angle parking. But additionally, we have studied taking Lafayette, turning it to one way between one eighty-two and Main Street. And so if we were to do that and restructure the area, you could actually gain about twenty parking spaces there. So really it'd actually be a net gain of about thirteen parkings, thirteen parking spaces in kind of that core downtown area. So that was something that we were, you know, really pleased to have to see that, kind of being able to reduce the parking loss of knowing that that's top of mind to the Main Street merchants. And so on that note, Autumn Rupp did really helped us by setting up a great kind of just open house meeting with the Main Street merchants in that theater and probably had thirty votes or so show up and really a great discussion. We went through, you know, very detailed plans, what we were doing, planning everything and got some great feedback overall. The merchants and everyone we talked to were very positive and so we were happy to see that. We did get some, you know, pointers on some things we need to look out for and so we'll talk through that here in just a minute. But I don't know, Autumn Rupp, if you have anything you'd like to add about the merchants?
I'm doing great.
So anyway, I wanted to start there and kind of say where we've been. We can pause and if there's any questions immediately or Owen can kind of dive into where we are.
Dive.
Okay.
I'm going to steal this and drive from here because the touch screen's getting a little bit. So we're going to start here in front of City Hall and I think one of the major caveats to this discussion is that we haven't changed the design to any significant extent from what it was when we went through the master plan. The bones of it are still intact. We hadn't had to really restructure any of the layout, but what we've really done is refine it to get it to fit within the survey, within the existing conditions, and then start to think through some more of the details of the design. What are the specific widths of certain areas, the planting zones, that sort of thing. And so this matches very much along with what you've seen through all the color renderings, but it just takes it to that next level of detail. And so if we start at City Hall, really what we're trying to do between the front door here and Washington is to create this prominent, really flexible space. It's a road, but it could also be an event space. That really stemmed from some inspiration from the Main Street Conference where an event was, was held within that space. We thought, well, what can we do to really like reinforce that idea and have it be a spot that could be used for events as well as just to like highlight the prominence of City Hall and this sort of terminus of Main Street. And so what we've done is we've actually pulled the roadway up to meet the sidewalk. So starting at this intersection, you can see sort of ramp up from the asphalt roadway and then this all becomes more or less flush. The, the reason in doing that is that it makes it feel very pedestrian oriented. It signals to vehicles, you need to slow down. This is primarily a people space, not a car space, but it's still a safe space for everybody involved because we're, we're lining it with bollards, we're sort of demarking that zone between vehicular and pedestrian with a flush curb. So there's still some delineation there on the ground plane as well as with the bollards.
Your color element, talk about that a little bit. That's, that's, what's, what's the element that, yeah, creates the color, there you go.
The pavement surface for the intersection as well as the roadway and then carrying all the way up to our building zone, that's all brick pavers. So there's a little bit of transition at the building edge where we'll have a strip of concrete that's sort of our building zone because there's a nice clean edge, but then everything outside of that to the next building edge would be brick pavers.
Is that vehicular traffic still coming through?
Yes.
And that's brick pavers not in the roadway, right, or just on the whole?
It is.
It's the same material all the way across.
And are those black dots, bollards?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
And then the, what Owen was talking about, the concrete band, kind of see here, that white kind of line that moves to there, which outlines the shape of the roadway, it's just a flush concrete band that helps visually delineate, you know, the areas that are, to your point, where the vehicular area is within, the bollards reinforce that and to make sure it's safe for pedestrians that are walking on the outside.
And there's still parking there.
Yes, sir.
And you guys have good luck with pavers in these type situations versus stamped and stained concrete?
It's the oil block out. It actually holds up a little bit better as long as you have a good base. And in this sort of application, we would tend to go towards a concrete base. So you have the concrete subsurface and then the pavers are set on top. The wear and tear on the paper itself, I think is reduced compared to what you'd see on stamped because that stamp is just eventually going to start to smooth out, color's going to start to look off. And so I think for, for this application, just a concrete base with brick pavers is the way to go.
And then when you have to make repairs, you can focus them on areas as opposed to having to do the whole thing?
That's correct. And we, you know, our, our utilities team that's working on the, the water and sanitary part, they have made conscious efforts to stay outside of those brick pavers so that if we are doing a concrete base, the repairs are easier. So most of the junctions are sort of outside of the really nice finished treatment just to plan for that long-term thing. Other things to note here, the, the traffic circle stays where it is, but it becomes a true circle. So we would, here we're still showing striping, then redirection back down, but just for this flow of traffic, we felt, our roadway team felt like it just made more sense for it to be a true circle instead of what we've been calling the keyhole. As we move further away from City Hall, we start to get into really what would be the, the standard for the core area. So when I say the core, we're talking from City Hall essentially to Reed's. That's the, the core area with the most merchants and the, the streetscape itself, the character stays pretty consistent through that stretch. And so we'll start at this intersection, you know, we're still in schematic design here so we're, we're thinking through, you know, what happens at each one of these corners. Obviously where we've got businesses adjacent at the corners, we want to plan for that to be a prominent space where they could spill out with displays or dining, but to have this really strong people space. So it starts to feel better as you, you bring in landscape, that would be the green that's sort of buffering the pedestrian from vehicular traffic. And then we're still working through, you know, what, what happens within that space. So for now, it just looks like it's a sea of pavers, but as we move through design into design development and CDs, we'll start to really program those spaces with overhead elements, additional planters, bench seating, it could be movable tables and chairs to really activate each one of those corners.
What type of linear feet are you talking about in that square right there? Are you talking twenty something foot wide?
That's probably twenty-five to thirty feet if I had to guess, looking at the parking spaces. We don't have to mention all this quite yet, but it's, it's.
When you transition from those papers, what does that gray, the squares, what, what type of imperfeas, what, what is that, yeah, what is that?
This one? So that would just go back to sort of a, a standard concrete, like a granite finish concrete. And then up against the building, we've got that edge, it's a nice clean edge. That can be some sort of specialty concrete, whether it's exposed aggregate concrete or stained concrete, just sort of looking at the options there to maybe a little more prominent right against the building.
Do the planter boxes move at all or they stay stationary where they're at? All the planter boxes down Main Street, do they?
Planter boxes, they're out there today.
Right.
They would be removed.
Okay.
Because really, all those are, it's, it's got a concrete base, so those tree roots aren't going anywhere. So I don't think that those trees are going to get much bigger than they are today, to be honest. So what we're proposing is to remove those planter boxes and put street trees incrementally down so you start to have a really consistent tree canopy to provide that shade that you need in an environment like this. And as part of that, what we've talked about doing is looking into what's called a silva cell. It's basically an underground structure that allows for those tree roots to continue growing laterally so that the tree can become bigger, it can eventually provide that much needed shade and it's not going to get choked out by being confined to a five by five box.
How do you keep those trees from buckling concrete and sidewalks?
Well, so that's part of what the cells do.
Just a bunker cell and the roots go out underneath it and?
In this area up here, which is called the furnishing zone, basically underneath those pavers, there'd be, it's a, it's a really heavy duty frame inside it, it's filled with soil. And so the tree roots have a place to grow and they stay there instead of coming up and buckling and doing exactly what you're saying. So, and those details are things that we're going to continue refining and talking to you all, but it's, when you look at pictures of where those type, the underground kind of root areas created compared to just your typical, you know, planters, you look at the trees over, you know, a couple of years, it's just night and day, the health and how they're growing. So it would be a really, really great addition. But just one other thing to kind of point out, you know, you were asking about, you know, you know, do the planters stay and, and what's going to, what's out there today, what's going to still remain? You know, just to be clear, I mean, basically from building face to building face, it's a complete removal, you know, brand new curb and gutter. Owen can talk through that, but the only thing that will remain are, you know, the, the overhead traffic arm and things like that. Everything else is going to be brand new, lighting, all of it.
And so that, that sort of brings the, the actual roadway section up. So what, what we're proposing is two thirteen foot wide travel lanes, which is still a kind of generous width for a travel lane. And then your angle parking stalls, if we're just measuring urbanity towards a curb, is about sixteen feet deep. I think if you measure from side to side, actual distance, it's closer to like eighteen, given the angle. And then you've got new curb and gutter, five and a half foot furnishing zone. So this would be another paver zone that acts, one is again a buffer between vehicular use and pedestrian use, but it also provides the opportunity for things like benches and trash receptibles, fire racks and all those things that in some streetscapes just sort of get thrown out there. There's not an intended spot for them. And so by providing this furnishing zone, there's sort of a delineated zone for those things, those elements can be placed. And then you've got twelve and a half feet or so, twelve to thirteen feet of just that standard room finished concrete. That's your main pedestrian sidewalk. It's a generous width intentionally because with a project like this, there's going to be more people downtown and so you want to provide ample room for, for that to happen. And then up against the building, that three foot building zone, this helps us deal with some of those irregularities within the face of the building and starts to sort of define what zone is the buildings, the, the businesses direct to zone where they could put out like a sandwich board or whatever it is and then that main pedestrian too. It, I think, just helps to sort of anger the, the business itself and, and helps us deal with some ADA accessibility stuff in, in some spots.
Any questions before we move to the next?
The, the parking spaces, I see vertically I guess at sixteen feet. How, how long do you say it was on, on the angle? Because I mean, some of us like me and the mayor drive pickups.
Right.
Big pickups.
Big pickups.
You're going to have to downsize.
No.
This, this is here is with, you know, firsthand parking spaces, right? So and just even if the spaces that are out there today are eleven feet, so we're actually making them.
They're giving us some.
Put your trailer on it.
Okay.
Bring the boat.
Pickups are twenty feet long.
You don't need to be parking underneath.
Let me come back up, I'm not going to hit.
All right, so this picks up where we left off on that last sheet and then it starts to cover the Lafayette intersection. And so the, the section here, really on, on either side, the, the dimension state is saying, I'll change a little bit once you get down here, we'll go through that in a second. What we're doing here, the intersection of, is we're bringing back to that tabletop condition.
How high a rise is that?
It's just your six inches.
General, it's, it's not a big deal, but it's notable, okay.
That's right.
Giant speed tables.
Exactly. And so you'll again ramp up these four sort of diagonal lines that you'll see, those are indicating where it's going to ramp up. And then you've got your pedestrian crosswalk up above that. So the, the ramps serves as your stop bar, if you will, for people that are stopping for the pedestrian crossings. But then it also indicates like, hey, you're coming up because you're meeting the pedestrian level. You need to be more aware of what's, what's happening within it. And so again, the use of pavers throughout, really the entire intersection, and again, the, the corners here are still sort of TVD in terms of what the programming is. We really wanted to solidify the overall layout before we dove into the details of those designs. But I think tabletop in this intersection is really a response to wanting this to become really your grand entrance into downtown, which we're talking about, coming in from one eighty-two via Lafayette. You come up and you've got this grand intersection. Each corner will be programmed with different elements and so it becomes your, your really prominent front door. As you move to the east, this is where we start to see more significant grade change between the roadway and the front door of those businesses. So how do we deal with that, that elevation change? And so what we're proposing, I'm just going to zoom in to one of these areas, is you come in, you have your, your parking curb and gutter and then you've got the two foot sort of landing zone to where you can get out of your car, you can get on that landing zone and that takes you east-west to get to the locations where we have stairs. And so here you've got steps that come up to that main sidewalk and then in some spots that juts back out into sort of an elevated area. So you're, you're up from the street level, but you've got a railing around you that sort of defines the spot that could be used to set up little pistro tables or sidewalk sale displays. Some of these could have wider rails for, say, beverage so that it starts to activate the streetscape a little bit more in terms of flexibility for uses.
Let me just say, like in front of the cafe, you're still at the street level, then you're coming to a four foot landing zone, but you're still going to have the stairs.
Yes.
And there's no way to eliminate the, to get it, I guess the, you know, the, the height is too much to come surface level with a?
That'd be a heck of a ramp. That'd be a table.
Yeah, I mean, that's probably one of our biggest complaints from ADA accessibility is that, is that one little strip right there in front of, of Hobie's and the cafe and for somebody ADA accessibility being able to get there, so.
We're going to have to obviously make everything we do ADA accessible and we'll be more compliant than we currently are, for sure.
There are ramps that exist in a lot of the intersections today, you know, down at, you know, at Jackson, right there in Chester, you know, there are ramps today that will be maintained. You can have ADA accessibility up to those spots and then where we've got the ADA parking position, you know, that there is not really that great a change right there. So there will be places where people can park and get right out and not have to deal with all that.
For each block, we really try to place that ADA parking at the top of the hill so that you could park and immediately hit that main sidewalk area without having to traverse the, but you'll still have the ability, the accessibility from City Hall all the way down to Montgomery for that accessible ADA route. And so that's really the most prominent grade change is here at the intersection of Jackson and Main. So the existing ramp here goes up and switches back to get up to grade. We haven't at this point really finalized or even looked into the grading for each one of those corners just because we weren't sure if this was going to be what we're moving forward. And so for now, it's sort of a similar situation where it's TVD in terms of how those accessible routes work at this corner specifically because it is a little bit more challenging given the extra grade change. So this starts to approach the end of what we're calling the core area, which is really going to stop here at the entrance into Reed's. And so you'll notice that we start to shift a little bit here where currently there's parallel parking on the south side of Main Street. We're actually proposing to go to angle parking to again bolster the parking numbers within the core, but also just because you have the real estate there to accommodate it. So that gets you additional parking spaces here on the south side. The bus stop, the smart bus stop actually gets moved out into this little island so it's a little more prominent and more easily accessible to get onto that bus. And then on the north side, parallel parking still stays as it is, essentially the same number of parking spaces. We're just looking at adding bump outs and that furnishing zone to really continue the streetscape retreat.
We've also got that furnishing zone in front of the hub now. So they've got a large furnishing area which will, hopefully we can all complement that together.
Right. As we move further down, you know, this is really, again, as I said, where we're, we're calling everything to the, the west of this, the core. Here we get into more, it's a, it's a different streetscape where instead of narrowing or expanding the sidewalk by five feet on each side, we're looking at expanding it by ten feet on each side. So that's additional room for pedestrians or bicyclists because it'll actually give you the width for a, a multi-use path. That ten foot width is really where you can start to intermingle pedestrians, scooters and bicyclists and that sort of thing. So the, the angle parking in front of the Presbyterian Church stays as it is, but then on the south side, we're going to start to transition from angle parking to parallel parking. And that's really what helps us provide that extra width for pedestrian and the furnishing zone and all those additional amenities that will be within the streetscape. So we'll go to the next enlargement here.
And one of the things that, I know y'all didn't count because we didn't have it, but we have, we've added or about to add striping for parking along Jackson Street, which is to the north of Hotel Chester on that west side. And I'm guessing there probably going to be a good five, maybe more, spaces that we can get out of that that will add definitive numbers to what y'all are looking at. And it still is right in, it's still in the core, so.
That's great. So this is a continuation of where we just were. This would be the Western Auto Building here on the left side. But this is where you can really start to see where the sidewalk width becomes much greater than it is today. So approaching ten feet in some areas while keeping a five-and-a-half-foot furnishing zone to establish that canopy throughout the corridor. And then it really tees up these adjacent properties for whatever's to come down the road. It's there, it's in place, you don't have to worry about it in the future. But you're already establishing that essential tree canopy in the sense of place. So some things within this space just sort of have to stay the way that they are for accessibility in the businesses. So that's where you'll see some of the departures here. But that's not the norm, that's just sort of working with what we've got. And then as you continue to move further, you get back to that consistent parallel parking, furnishing zone, ten-foot wide sidewalk. And that's continued all the way down to Montgomery. So this is sort of the terminus of the project on the east end. The big change here is that we're proposing to remove the dedicated right turn lane. That gives us some extra space here in front of the library. Part of the scope of this project is to look at really from the curb line all the way to the face of the library. So that could become more of a public space amenity. We just, for where we are, design, again, haven't gotten to those details yet. But what that helps us, removing that right turn lane helps us do also is to realign with Montgomery to the east. So you can't really tell from this, this is the existing condition with the striping than what's being shown here, but that dedicated right turn would actually go away on the east side as well so that things can start to shift to the north so that your through lanes on either side are better aligned than they are today. You can see that jog through that intersection. And so as we move through the redesign of this intersection, things will start to realign, feel a lot better, more consistent, really through the whole corridor. So that's sort of a broad brush of the entire corridor. I think the one thing that I tend to always fail to mention are the loading zones. So this is something that the businesses were actually really incented to was providing dedicated loading zones on the intersecting streets at Jackson, Lafayette, and Washington. Now, these are zones that would be long enough to fit the big beer trucks that are coming in, the eighteen-wheelers. They could also accommodate the smaller things, obviously, your UPS, FedEx. But the idea here is that it's time restricted. So it's a loading zone from whichever hours you, as the city, determine it needs to be a loading zone. And then after that, it becomes parking again. So that's something we're still sort of debating on the Lafayette loading zone as to the placement of that. There was some concern about putting it on the south side. It's currently shown there, but the merchants made us aware that it can sort of be an issue for those larger trucks. So it may be that this one's a little more restricted in terms of what kind of trucks can utilize it, but there will still be a loading zone at Lafayette, you know, toward their south side.
Well, the north side would be problematic if they're going off.
Due to the.
Rolling down the hill pretty quickly.
And the concern that was raised by the merchants is, you know, the great observation is just that the trucks that do drive in there today, when they get to the end, they all have some issues with trucks hitting the rails and driving into those landscape beds. And so what we're going to be looking at if we're doing all of this, since our roadway team has software that can simulate how those things, how the trucks move, we can make sure that we've got the right radius and everything, make sure that those things, that trucks can move through this, you know, and not all those issues. So those details are still going to be work through.
Any questions at this point? Cut.
We'll just quickly run through the summary modifications. We just talked about all of it, but this really highlights it. We'll try to hit the high points here. So from Montgomery to Jackson, we're talking about narrowing the curb-to-curb distance by twenty feet plus or minus. We're doing that by converting the angled parking into parallel parking to provide that additional pedestrian space. From Jackson to Washington, that distance is reduced by ten feet to give you an additional five on either side of the road. Travel lanes are reduced in width. Loading zones are provided in lieu of the left turn lane. At the Lafayette intersection, it'll be tabletop, that's where speed table flush condition. Jackery paving. It could also double the pit space there at the intersection. As you move westward, Washington to City Hall, the entire area between that intersection and the front door would be sort of that flush condition, similar to Lafayette. The air circulation remains the same throughout all of that. Parking, so this is outside of the core, Montgomery to Western Auto, where we're converting to parallel parking. Obviously, there's a significant reduction in spaces in doing so. So that's a loss of twenty-nine spaces within that area. But then from Reeds to City Hall, the core is, it's a seven-space reduction. So we've really minimized the impact to the true downtown area. And then if we look at Lafayette and the changes that you mentioned on Jackson, then it starts to be offset with some conversions there. So overall, with the current configuration, it's a net loss of thirty-six spaces. But if you factor in Lafayette, it's really only sixteen.
I think, yeah. Edward, I think you looked at that with me when you were playing city engineer. Is that not like five or six spaces that are along Jackson from Hotel Chester down to Jefferson, parallel there?
We've never drawn it.
Yeah, I think it's like five or six spaces. So that would net out to, yeah.
Most of those parking places that are lost, though, are Montgomery, well, past Reeds down to Montgomery.
That's correct.
So the downtown, the downtown area may actually have more parking than currently is there?
I don't think we'll get there even with the Jackson and Lafayette, but.
Well, the core area, we would only lose seven. So if you add twenty and some of Jackson, we would have a net eighteen of spaces in the core. But from, yes, but from Reeds to the east on Montgomery, where you really don't have many businesses.
At this point, yeah.
A lot of those, you know, a lot of those businesses that are there today have their own parking areas in fact. And so really, we're thinking about, you know, the area from, between Montgomery and just say Western Auto, that by putting in the streetscape, it really makes it really prime for development. And so you'll have the parallel parking there, which is needed. And as those parks develop for change in use, they have the ability to control parking on our side as well.
If we start to look at the pedestrian and multimodal aspect of the project and the modifications we're proposing, between Montgomery and Jackson, you get an additional ten feet of pedestrian space on either side of the street. So that goes to the furnishing zone as well as the sidewalks. The area from Jackson to City Hall, again, five feet on either side for the same purposes. And then just throughout the corridor, we're proposing larger bump outs or new bump outs that shorten the pedestrian crossing and just make it a safer environment for everybody. New lighting throughout, so that would be in the form of pole-top lighting for pedestrians as well as accent lighting, string lights, special light tower elements. Obviously, ADA accessibility is a priority through the whole project. Improved pedestrian multimodal safety and then accommodation for the smart bus stops throughout the corridor. And then utilities, as a separate contract with Stronghold Utilities, our utilities team is designing new water and sanitary sewer throughout the corridor as well as on Lampkin. I think you're all aware of what's going on there. But as part of this project, obviously, lighting and electrical improvements throughout the corridor, storm range modifications to match up with what we're changing within the roadway. And then we're coordinating with AT&amp;T to have some of their utility lines that are further down closer to Montgomery, through between Caldwell and Montgomery, to have those relocated to be underground. So it's a heavy lift there, but we're taking it on.
Well, they're used to it now with one eighty-two. They've had to work with us sometimes.
That's what we're hoping. They love us. They love us. So that's really the broad brush. Can I say broad brush? I sound like I talk for way longer than you probably.
No, that was great. And Edward, just to back, back, oh, and up, you and I talked this morning. So your project is moving forward with the water lines and the sewer lines, and you're looking at, tell again, the timeline for everybody?
We're about eighty to eighty-five percent through the design on that project. It does include water lines on Lampkin and Main Street slash Universal Drive as well as some side streets there on Washington and Jackson. So those will be an improvement. We have some redundant lines there. We're consolidating it into a single line. We have been working with the utility group on trying to locate these lines and locations, especially where they tee or have a lot of bins and connections out of these, what I would consider higher hardscape areas. So it's a lot easier to dig into pavement and under regular concrete sidewalks than it is, say, like that decorative paper. So we're coordinated on that. We're trying as best we can to do that, but obviously there are locations where there's no way to appoint that. It does include some, a minor component of that project is sewer related. We've identified a good number of sewer issues behind Stronghold Cafe, for example, near the police station, just old antiquated lines that need a full replacement, manholes that need to be completely re-replaced or reworked. So, but all in all, that's a pretty minor part of the project. We're about eighty to eighty-five percent through. Hope to have it done in this fall, come back to the board for final, with the final plan, get authorized to advertise, hopefully get a biz and a contract by the end of the year in strong construction versus twenty-three is our plan right now.
And we also are obviously going to be in touch with everybody impacted. Everybody along Lampkin, everybody along Main Street. We've got the email addresses for everybody on Main Street. We'll gather the ones for Lampkin and make sure everybody's in the loop as to the timing and what's going on and how it's going to impact. Okay. Anything else, guys? All right. Any questions from the board at this point?
About three or four just observations. One, the smart bus right in front of Reeds, you know, that basically every time it's a stop there, I mean, on game day, forty, fifty people hanging out. Is there any way that you can back that up like it exists currently where the bus can pull out of the road and then continue traffic flow? Or why did you put it out like that?
It was really just taking the location where it is and putting it out in the location where it's easier for people to get in, out of the class. We've had some conversations with Jeremiah. He's actually interested in having some additional stops. And so that's an additional coordination that we're going to make. I mean, to your specific question about did the bus, I guess, pull off of the main roadway, is that what you're saying, or regard, and be able to get back on? We have not studied that, but we can look at that with him and see what options.
There was another thing you said, the additional footage, which constitutes coming a, well, I guess it wouldn't be a multi-use path in the scooter traffic. Because scooters would never be allowed on sidewalks, correct? Or would the scooters be allowed to ride?
It's multi-use.
Ma'am?
If it's multi-use.
Multi-use designates, and they turn to where they can.
When you get to that piece of it, it would be more.
It could be scooter friendly.
Minimal to scooters, yeah.
I just wonder. Then you said a total timeframe shutting down Main Street, I guess, in front of the businesses and they could access from the back. How many months?
So we talked a lot about that with merchants. And I think the main, I guess, message that we communicated to them in that we're going to be, as we're doing our design and as we're finishing the documents, that some of which will kind of dictate the phasing, we want to try to make sure that people always have access to the front of the building. We've looked at some other cities that have done similar type of construction, and they've got some unique ways of, you know, doing concrete cores late at night where it'll set up in time where they can put plywood on it and people can access the front of the business. So other options are for phasing to where only half the roadway is shut down at one time. So particular traffic will have to be, you know, maintained, you know, through there, but.
During construction?
Well, at least on one side of the road, yes. So some of that's going to be up to the contractor, right, and how they want to means in that. But what we are going to ensure is that our bid documents state, you know, here are all the things that can pass through to the contractor. You have to be able to allow businesses to be able to get to their front door, you know? And we're going to put in those provisions where it's in the contract, they're signing that this is what you're signing up for, and you have to price it according.
You're seeing a lot of this in law. We just spent a couple of weekends down there, and basically all they do is put up an orange fencing and you just access from the back. I was thinking this was a complete shutdown, rebuild, and get it back up, you know? And that's what my question, I was, you thinking four to six months, eight months?
The whole, the whole project will be based on similar strokes of work that we've been doing recently, really more like fourteen to eighteen months. To do the whole project. But it's not to say that the whole project, the whole quarter is going to be shut down for that time period. They're going to do it in increments. And so portions of the road will be disrupted for that period of time, but not the entire length.
I don't know. I think sometimes worse to rip a Band-Aid off halfway through every week, you know, when you've got it shut down. That's what they're doing in law, and, you know, and it's just, you can see it build back and looks better. And then last thing, I'll say, nine and a half million dollar budget. I know you're getting creative, but I'd probably support this. You know, are you seeing any tax increase? Or I know you've been reaching out to different groups and agencies and.
I have been. And I think we'll continue to get some input from folks. I know Representative Robertson has said he'll bring it back to the state again for some additional funding. I think there's some opportunities.
What are you up to right now in your role in total?
About almost five million.
Okay. How you?
Anyone else? Comments? Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to take the Alderman Beatty role here today. And we know that, as a university town, we have some real surges in the amount of traffic that we see, game day weekends, Bulldog Bash, that sort of thing. How do you plan for those kinds of surges? Can you plan for those kind of surges? And how do the changes that you're proposing impact those weekends? And in the back of my mind, I remember you talking about some things that you can do with signalization that will improve traffic flow.
Yeah. So I think that it is important to separate the special events and special weekends, you know, which is, you know, single-digit usually, number of days, it's like that, maybe a dozen, from the other three hundred and fifty-odd days of the year, right? And you can do very special things on those days to accommodate it. So, I mean, we've talked about, you know, this, and this project may change, you know, what you do during those days. Like, you have spaces in this project that can be close to traffic and maybe, you know, open only to pedestrians, right? And that would promote more people visiting and being able to, you know, enjoy the space and.
and, and, and walk around and shop. But if you were to just operate the way you do today, I think, like, one, I think you can operate almost identically as it does today. I think you can probably do better with what we call just event, traffic management plans, which really just helps identify how people get in and out and, you know, are we blocking on certain areas or not? And, you know, in that case, you may cone off certain sections or if it's the type of thing where everybody shows up and then leaves at the same time, we've done plans where we'll temporarily one-way streets outbound just to kind of help flush everything. So I think it comes to more of an event management plan type effort. But, you know, if what works today tends to work, I would apply the same kind of analysis and results from the traffic study that it'll be very similar results in the future as well.
You were just talking about during construction, weren't you saying?
No, I was talking about ongoing, ongoing traffic downtown and the impact. And then because the mayor and Alderman Brooks drive giant trucks, and I don't have to worry about Alderman Rupp, his is a tiny little sports car. Because they have such large trucks, can they back out and move forward without smashing into me as I'm driving down Main Street?
Yeah, and that's where you see this, so a couple of things. They mentioned that these are actually larger parking spaces than what's out there today.
Okay.
Two is you see the 13-foot wide lane. If there wasn't parking there, I would be yelling at these guys not to put in 13-foot lanes because that's a very, that's a very wide lane compared to the typical. But what that does is it creates a little buffer space. I mean, a car is eight foot wide maximum. So it creates a little space for that, that kind of backend to kind of ease out a little bit. It tells the oncoming traffic that, hey, there's a car trying to back out and it gives you that space to look back there. I'll be honest, like the advent of the, like, rear view display is a massive help in these situations, but, yes, that is enough room to handle that, that 13 feet to back out.
And how does that compare to the width of Lafayette, which is a tight street right now?
Yeah, right. It's wider and it'll feel.
13 feet is wider than?
Yeah, when you've got cars, I think they'll both size a lot, you're pretty narrow, probably 11-ish, if not less.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Ballard, would existing ballards be placed back for concert purposes and all that or proposing other things?
Well, that's one of the things that, one of the details we're going to work through. Essentially, we're going in and we're, you know, all the asphalt is going to be built and we're going to come in brand new. And so it's really looking at it from a brand new, you know, standpoint of where are those ballers now need to be placed to allow for these new spaces to kind of serve as event purpose. So we're going to be taking a friend with all that and working with you all, city engineering department, to make sure that they're put back in the appropriate.
Yes, sir.
And all the signal lights will be, where you can synchronize them or where you can adjust them, they'll have sensors on them?
Yeah, so we are maintaining most of the traffic signal infrastructure. You've got good nice arms and there's no reason to assume, you know, $50,000 profit just to replace them. But a part of that, this will include internal kind of upgrades with the components as well as I think there's a big opportunity just for some re-timing out there to accommodate the traffic flows differently. But yes, you would be able to put in that opportunity.
Anyone else? Cool. Okay. All right, so I'm going to, I'm going to pose the question. Pizza and salad is in the conference room. If anybody wants to stop now before we go into budget and get that and then go forward?
Can we have just a break or no other?
You can have a quick break, absolutely. So we will, we will break and be back in about, at noon, something like that.
What time is it?
It's 10:00.
Love to catch you too.
Where's the food? It's in the small conference room. Pizza and salad. I saw you dancing the other night, Mr. Evans.
Let you roll.
Okay, well, it about a year ago, we were here and we were as a board, as a current board, doing our first budget and our biggest goals last year were to try to get us to a market competitive salary position. So we were looking at raises across the city and to not raise taxes, which is always a goal. We did that last year by delaying the raises to the second quarter of this fiscal year. So the first three months, we were at our old rate and then we moved to a new rate. Ten months into the budget, we know more now than we did a year ago, and two key takeaways and projections that y'all should be aware of is that Webb has looked at this and I have looked at this, and we're both pretty comfortable that we're going to finish the year in the black, primarily because we're selling the Nucor building. So we had a one-time infusion of cash there for the Nucor building. That's one thing to be aware of. And another is that in a year where we've had a lot of vacancies, the savings that you would expect to see from those vacancies were offset by this being the once every 14 or 15 years when 27 payrolls hit in the GL in one year. So I'll be honest, we did not anticipate that. We did not count pay dates, and so we under-budgeted salaries. We were fortunate in that we had a lot of vacancies, and so that was covered. And then the Nucor building sale.
And that one pay period adds up to roughly?
Say $400,000, $4.50.
Really? Okay.
So that was not budgeted for, but we weren't hurt by it because we have had an outstanding number of vacancies. But the bottom line is that and the Nucor building are what's going to drive us finishing the year in the black. And our finish in the year in the black is important as we talk about whether or not we do a pay raise for next year and how we time that pay raise. So this year, we're facing some pretty big changes in operations. There will be increased services, primarily policing and some street things out in the annexed territory. We planned for that, and that's going to be offset by increased revenues from that area. We're also expecting to see, as always, increased operational costs, although this year they may be at a higher pace than they traditionally are for things like gas and oil, supplies, upgrades to equipments, replacing equipments in various departments. So typically, typically, and this would be a typical year, where we can absorb those sorts of things in our organic growth in sales tax and property taxes. That's the typical part of it. The thing we didn't anticipate last year, and we must address this year, I think if we're going to meet our requirements to do the things that we need to do to ensure public health, safety, and welfare, we didn't see the job market changing in the way that it's changed over the last 12 months. We didn't see the turnover that we were going to be having across all departments, but particularly in police and fire. And those are the departments that most are most basic to our functions of our core functions of public health, safety, and welfare. We find ourselves not just losing employees who we've hired and equipped and trained, but not being able to recruit employees because other municipalities are also in this situation and are also trying to recruit employees. NAV worked with the Stennis Institute, and if we can have that payroll summary sheet, NAV worked with the Stennis Institute to determine what competitive salaries would be. And I'll just be honest, the increase is frankly staggering. It would, the change over the last 12 months is so much more than we anticipated, particularly in police and fire. The projected annual impact is about $1.1 million, a little over $1.1 million in the general fund. Other funds like sanitation and utilities are also impacted by this.
That's a full year, right?
That's a full year. That's an annual impact. And if you'll look at that, I've done the math for you, police and fire, police and fire there in the general fund account for almost 90% of that increase. It's 89 point something, something percent of that increase. So those are the, those are the areas that are really driving this conversation. We're tasked as a board with setting policies that support health, safety, and welfare. And part of setting that policy is adopting a budget that sufficiently funds those purposes. We also are mandated, and Alderman Beatty talks about this all the time, we're mandated to adopt a balanced budget. We're not allowed to operate at a loss. So the draft budget that you see is balanced. The proposal was, keeping in mind that we, to the extent possible or not wanting to increase taxes, the budget is balanced with a one mil tax increase. That funds about 40% of our needs. And freezing positions in police and fire that we're unlikely to be able to fill, just to be dead honest, over the next 12 months because there is so much competition for, for those positions. So we will, because freezing positions is never an ideal way to balance a budget, we will bring those positions back online as funds are available. That may be in fiscal year '24. That could be in fiscal '23 if our revenues are increased more than we expect. We projected revenues fairly aggressively this year. It kind of hurt as an accountant to project some of the revenue growth as much as we did, but we do think they're realistic numbers. The alternative to freezing the positions is a bigger tax increase or even greater operational changes. So I get that tax increases are not popular. Nobody likes them, even when they support those core functions of public health, safety, and welfare. We've tried to limit that amount. And if you could, William, if you could do that other screen, the proposed increase to an amount that will not have a material negative impact on our taxpayers. Your tax calculations are based on true value, not market value, but the true value is assigned by Allen Morgan over in the Tax Assessor's Office. One mil of increased taxes for $100,000 house with homestead exemption is $10. If you've got a $300,000 house, multiply that number by three. And that $100,000 true value is probably significantly less than the market value of your house. Just, I doubt most of us would sell our houses for what they're on the tax rolls for. So that's, that's, that's the calculation. If you happen to be over 65 or disabled and qualify for the additional $75,000 exemption, one mil on a $100,000 house is $2.50. If you are fortunate enough for this to be your second house or you own commercial property, the classification is different and you're taxed at a slightly higher rate than residential homestead exemption properties are taxed. But $100,000 in commercial properties or second homes is $15.
How many annually?
That's annually. That's annually. So a mil will impact your taxes. It will not materially impact because as your property value goes up, your ability to pay should probably also be going up. And so I think using, looking at these numbers, the people who might struggle most to, to deal with a tax increase will, will see that these are not material impacts. By doing the tax increase, by freezing the positions, we, we have tried to make sure that we don't have that negative impact to our taxpayers while providing a true direct benefit to our employees, allowing us to hire them, allowing them to have living wages, and to directly benefit our taxpayers by providing sufficient and quality public safety services. Public safety being primarily fire and police. And to that extent, before we start our discussion, I'd like to ask Chief Ballard, is he still here?
I think he's in there grabbing some pizza.
Okay. Chief Ballard is here. Would you talk a little bit about the impact of salaries on your ability to hire, retain, recruit employees?
Yes, ma'am. Obviously, I think that this is part of a national trend that's impacted Starple big time. After the Floyd riots and coming off of COVID, the industry was picked up and flipped. If you could retire, you got, if you, a lot of imagery went from superhero to supervillain and judged as, as a whole rather than individual departments. What is killing us is the recruitment. And so you got people that are exiting. You got people that are not coming in because the standards are pretty high, as they should be. The training has got to be high. You've all witnessed this just the other, other night of how important training and getting qualified personnel are. Where we are with the industry is it's kind of like, as discussed earlier in the week, it's kind of like the NIL and athletics. Police officers recognize that they're a valuable asset in the fact that they're willing to do the job, face the dangers, and do the training. So where the industry is going, recruit from other people. Starple has extremely high standard in that we're nationally accredited. We do have a high call volume, which is sometimes works against us. But any other agency that's higher paying knows they come and they get a great trained personnel to work with them for more money. And at the end of the day, while we care about national standards, and it obviously protects us from liability world to the average employee, it's not that important. If they're making more money, their bank account, their, their needs for their family, that's where they're going to be attained for. We have really struggled with retention in the fact of keeping those predatory agencies. I suspect, since I'm watching this meeting as I speak, that are lobbying hard for more officers. I've been losing about, I think in December, meeting with Budget Chair, we really kind of sounded alarmed. And since then, I've lost two officers a month, going from December to now. I do anticipate to losing four or six more as between now and December, at least with the relationships of the officers. And this is a financial decision based on them. So with that, and what we're losing as far as expense wise, you have at least 23, if I were to hire an individual off the street and give her a badge and gun, and she's never been a police officer before, it's 23 weeks right out the door, 23 weeks. It's 13-week program. It's the academy. And when she completes that 23 weeks, there's going to be investment in bulletproof vests, investment in individual stuff, not including the salary of the field training officer and her salary. What I'm having happen is they walk out the door at the academy and they say, "See you, Star." We're going to agencies on the coast. We're going to agencies in the state. We're going to agencies in North Mississippi. That is money that we're hematring and losing. It is a loss of expertise where I can't even get them trained up. And I think all of our foundations are strong. I mean, you know, I ride with our officers today. They finished on Friday. I think our Esprit de Corps is there. I think our equipment is great. I think everything that we're doing support-wise everywhere else is phenomenal in the performance of our officers. What we're not competitive right now is in the willing to pay. And I ask you, if you're, you know, the very powerful thing, a speaker for us asks, raise your hands if you're encouraging your family doing law enforcement right now. And I guarantee you, a lot of people aren't raising their hands. It is a very dangerous, tough job. And so the training has got to be there. The standards have got to be there. And in order to get those professionals, that's where they recognize they're a valuable asset. It's not just Starple. Every agency is struggling to recruit and to retain. It's just where the industry is. They're going after the certified officers that are able to make it through the vetting process. And unfortunately, we have a really good name, and fortunately, we have a really good name, but they're coming to Starple right now because we're the gift that keeps on giving, to sum it up.
So, so when, when you lose an officer, we can, if we lose them to another Mississippi municipality or certain entities in the state, we can bill them for the training cost and we can get the training cost back. But we can never get back that 23 weeks that they spent at school. So you are consistently almost a half a year behind in having your staff trained up when you're losing those people. When you're recruiting people right now, I'm sure you have open, I know you have open positions, and I know you're talking to people about it. What kind of response are you getting from, from them? Are they waiting on this? Or are they?
They are. You know, I've expressed before, I think our police department is one that watches these meetings closer than anybody. When you look on the social media, who's watching, they care. It's a competitive world, and there are other agencies that are saying, you know, hey, we've got less calls, a lot less paperwork, and you get more money, you know? And that's kind of what we're going, going against. And to go back with your first question, it's only a matter, it's two years. After, after that, we don't get the reimbursement. So if I'm losing a three-year mark, four-year mark, we don't get them.
That's right.
So that is something that, again, that's just where they're getting ready. That's, that's the experience. All that training I mentioned, they never responded to robbery. They never responded to some of the more serious crimes on their own, individually handling. And that's the type of stuff that only comes with time, time engraved. And we have a phenomenal department, but they're getting younger and younger. And as we go into our peak season, it is something of a conservative, for sure.
Thank you.
Chief, I gotta ask you one more.
Yes, sir.
What, what does it cost to train for, often go to training? How much it costs?
A basic academy training, equipment, and everything, we're looking around 15, 16,000, sir.
Chief, how long is it going to take you to get up to speed completely?
It's going to be based on my ability to recruit certified officers. And even if I bring in certified officers, we're looking at minimal for certified. Agency elsewhere approved in the market, six to eight weeks before they're released on their own. If I'm recruiting non-certified, they come in, again, a 23 week. And there's limitations with that. I've only got what we call four field-trained-in officers within the patrol division. So your quality of care, when you give someone a badge and gun, the oversight is tremendous. And so you cannot slam the system, as a lot of agencies make the mistake of doing, and doing a huge hiring spree, bringing everybody on, and they're not vetted, improper backgrounds, improper quality control. So we would be very determined in that to, you know, hire four, set the pace. When we can come up, hire four more, set the pace. So with that being said, if we were to begin the process, and I don't lose, right, we're probably looking into the late winter, early spring before we're fully?
Six months, roughly.
Roughly, if not longer, before we can reset and get where we need to be.
And I think it's the same for fire, if I'm not correct.
About a year, so about.
So how, with this budget, are these numbers based on October 1 filling them all? Or does it take into account?
They're, they're, they're based on getting them filled October 1. And with frozen positions, we've got a half a million dollars of frozen positions in there, which would account for that time when some of these jobs are vacant. And then we would, next year, have to refill those positions. I'm going to give Chief Yarborough an opportunity to?
Chief, can I ask a chief question?
Sure.
And I guess to you too, if we increase the salaries per, per the proposed budget, how much do we close the gap? And I mean, how, are we going, does that, do we become competitive? We're more competitive. But do we become competitive enough with the people who are taking our officers from us that we can keep them or not just have to recruit? I mean, what, tell me what you think of that?
In two words, I'd say game over. And I'm coming right back to those agencies, and I'm going to recruit the best people they got.
How much are we closing the gap between what, say, Tupelo or somebody like that is paying and we're going to pay right now?
That's a great question, I think.
So with that, the data we have is sort of showing like a basically the average for our comparable cities. And so that should, for now, I'll say that in the present, for now, for us in the running. But of course-
Move your target.
Yes, it is.
And we can't chase everybody. They've got more money than we do. The best we can do is be competitive, as competitive as we possibly can. And I think we all have a lot to offer that isn't just, isn't just money, but it is something that gives you quality of life. And so we feel like that kind of competition is also, has, has value.
One second, what we got is the, is the house market. I mean, people hear the target. I mean, $35,000, $40,000, if your wife makes it, you can't buy a house. I mean, that's, those are the kind of things that we're, we're facing, right, Chief? I mean, if somebody wants to make a career in the state and live in Starple and move a ladder with our escalating, more so than most places, house prices, that's, that's pressure on us, right?
It is an issue. A lot of our officers do cursey officer, but that's not ideal when you get, everybody, well, a lot of our officers choose and want to have a family. And, you know, growing up, and I'm not taking away from our apartment complexes, but a lot of people want to be able to own a house or be able to have a place to raise a family in a house. And it's, those are very real pressures upon the men and women who serve. And it's a difference maker in changing with a higher-paying agency, going from an apartment complex to, to be able to afford some of those basic fundamentals. Yes, sir.
Chief Yarborough, you want to talk about how it's impacted your department?
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon, Mayor Ford. Thanks, Mayor. Pretty much the same thing as Chief Ballard. One of our main issues is getting people in. Just recruiting themselves is a big deal right now. Not only are we losing people to other departments, but we're also losing people to other industries. So people leaving the fire service completely, going to, being safety officers. We had one just leave to be a salesman. So people leaving the fire service in general as well. We used to have 35 people show up for hirings. Now, if we had two slots, we had 35 people show up for two slots. Now, 15 slots. We have two people show up for 15 slots. So it's changed. Losing Tupelo, losing to Oxford, of course, South Haven, places like that, places who are making more money. Even though we offer, we have a lot more to offer. We have more training classes. We have better department, better equipment. They still want to go chase the money. It's not like it used to be. We have a 21-year-old, and I started at 23. I knew I was going to be here for 25, 20. It's not like that. They will leave for a dollar more, leave their department, go somewhere else. So it's, it's, it's evolving. Tupelo right now is looking at another increase. So we probably maybe lose some more to Tupelo. So we have some people that's kind of standing by watching, just like Chief Ballard, watching to see what's going to happen with this budget and see. And someone will make their decision based on that. So it will take about a year to fill everybody. Right now, it's about $7,000 to outfit a firefighter. That's classes, getting them in class and everything taken care of. If they leave us today and they go somewhere else for two years, we can charge them about $1,200, that's about it. And the other departments will pay that in a minute just to get the certified firefighter, so.
We pay, we, Chris, I pay. What's, what? What's, what would be the discrepancy between what we pay a basic firearm and say what Tupelo pays a basic firearm?
I'm not sure, not, I hadn't started numbers.
Greg should have that information for you.
I'll pull it up in just a moment.
Okay. He's, he'll pull it up. He's got it. He got the stats.
But the, the numbers that Greg and Nav have put together and worked with Webb on, on their spreadsheet get us at 100% of the market of eight to 10 towns that are comparable. All are, all, everybody on payroll with the city of Starkville would be at that 100% mark for those towns. And I know they include Oxford and Tupelo, South Haven.
Columbus, Tuscaloosa?
I'm not, I, I.
Wait, you said, you saw, you have shaking hands after what?
Oh, well, South Haven and Columbus were kind of an outlier. So from the high end to have the low, so they kind of got eliminated. We were looking more in the mean.
But that mid-range, but it should put us squarely in the market. That doesn't mean we won't be back here next year having this same conversation because, as Chief Yarborough said, Tupelo is looking at an increase. I understand Oxford is looking at an increase for some of their positions as well. So it is, we, we, we want to, we don't want to set the bar for the market, but we sure don't want to be bringing up the, the bottom rung either, so.
There's another thing also. Right now, Collierville, Tennessee, taking Mississippi firefighters, 70, 61,000 of you starting on.
Say that again.
Collierville, Tennessee, they have recruited firefighters in Mississippi who are certified, 61,000 of you starting on, so.
Where's, where's Collierville? It's right outside Memphis?
So that's what's the issue with Memphis right now. And South Haven, they're also losing people to Collierville now, so.
And we can't chase that. We just don't have the ability to do that. So we've got to be reasonable about it. We've got to have a, a fair wage that's competitive. But there are certain folks we can't chase. Yes, sir.
So I 100% support the raises. And I, I think we can do it. But I also think we can do it without the tax increase. If it's going to take them a year to fill the positions, if we stagger when those positions become open at their discretion, we don't have to have that in the budget. And we pull that money out of the budget.
And we've accounted for that. We've taken a half a million dollars out. We have, we've already done that.
How can we, how do we get to that number?
It's two police positions and eight fire positions.
Just two, but I mean, it's going to take them a year.
He's got 15 openings right now, 15. And Chief Ballard has 10.
So if we can't hit that number, I'd still be against the tax increase. But I think we could make the raises start December 1 versus October.
Well, and what I would, what I would propose is that we actually make the raises effective as soon as possible. Remember I said that we think that we're going to finish this year? We're projecting that we're going to finish this year in the black, which would allow us to go ahead and start the raises in August. As soon as we adopt a budget, it would allow us to start the raises in August and maybe retain some of those people that are on the fence about leaving us. Allow us to start recruiting a little earlier. Allow the, the chiefs the opportunity to start filling those positions sooner and, and, and getting us back up to where we need to be.
Oh, sister, when you, when he's frozen out, it's 521,000 or whatever it is frozen out. I mean, does that mean we don't recruit those people in 25, 23, or what?
I, I say, as the year unfolds.
And we see our money going and kind of.
Yes, we, we can, we can feather them back in. If we're, if we've been successful in filling positions and if revenues are increasing more than, we can do that. But I, I think that even, last year, we delayed the raises and, and.
When did we give a raise last?
January, this, this January. So last year.
How much was that raise?
It was about a little under half a million dollars.
It was also driven by the salary survey.
It was driven by.
Trying to follow that salary survey information.
But there's, but, but there's been a huge change in the market over, over those 12, 12 months. And so we can, nobody, nobody wants to go into this raising taxes. Nobody. But, but we do it now or we, we're back again next year having the same conversation we had last year. How do we accomplish these things without doing a tax increase? And at some point, you've just got to pull the trigger and, and do the tax increase.
Greg has found, found the answer. Tupelo, Tupelo versus us, I think Alderman Beatty is asking about.
Now for firefighters, let's go here.
And we're at what?
And we're at, go to our current. It's on the sheet, that's why I had to talk about it. Our current firefighters are 36, 239.
Okay, so about 4,000 difference, $3,500 difference.
Yes, sir.
We, we, it's not just about the firefighter. You just imagine when we do sanitation, we do the same thing. And then you, you go, you cut back and try to pick up sanitation on one day a week. People don't get phone calls like that. They say, do you have any phone calls when sanitation department not working? I mean, that's just not just for the fire department, but it's just for all our employees. You cannot continue to use quality employees just because of money. I mean, we, we got to do everything we can to try to accommodate our employees. I'm like you said, I don't believe in tax. They'll tell you how I forced them for 13 years of raising taxes all while I have ever done. But to come to a point sometime, I have to do what I don't want to do in order to accommodate these people because it ain't about me. It's about the one that voted for me and put me in this position to accommodate you. That's what it's about with me. And I, you know, I just, I, I, we got to do something.
I think we can get to the rate. I, I, I'm, I'm, I agree with you. I think we should get the rates.
We'll be back there next year if we don't do something. Because they, like Charles said, they just wait. And Chief said, they just wait to see what are we going to do? And what are we going to do? If we don't do what they think we're going to do to get it on rate, you're going to lose them all. You're going to lose them all.
Let me put it in perspective. We just finished up a $25 million recreation project. We're doing a project down the hill that will push $20 billion for the renovation. This, this is out on the norm, but let's just look at it like this. And we about to put, push a project up here that will be 10, 20, 25, 40, 50, 50-plus million dollars in renovations, streets, gates and ball fields. But yeah, we below the midpoint in paying policemen and firemen and sanitation workers. And that's something I'd kill if we, if we're not paying people comparable salaries, midpoint salaries to what our competitors do. And we spending money out here on those stuff like all get out. So I mean, I think we do it for the right reasons. But certainly, if we can find ways, and we always do, to creatively finance and afford all this other stuff we want, we can find a way to pay our employees.
And let me say while we're at it, I've, I've did my, my little bit of research and I sent it to all y'all on an email so that you got it. But as it stands right now, there are only four municipalities of our size in the state of Mississippi who are lower than we are. And that is Ridgeland, Pearl, Madison and Biloxi. And we can all figure out what they've got that, that we don't.
Tax rate, tax rate.
Sales taxes.
They've got huge amounts of sales taxes.
What you're talking about, Avalon tax rate?
Our tax rate, our Avalon tax rate. And ours is at 30.13. The ones that are closest to us is Oxford at 30.70. And who's it? Biloxi is 30.10.
And they've got gambling.
Yeah, and the highest is actually Greenville at 75, 41. So even if we were to raise one mill to become 31, 13, we are still in exactly that same structure. And that's assuming that nobody else is raising their taxes to do exactly what we're trying to do. So we still remain fifth in the state in terms of the, the taxes. And just to, again, take it a little further, Octobah County, Forest and Lafayette. Oxford School District, well, we won't go over that. The total amount in Lafayette, which is Oxford, Oxford School District and Lafayette County is 127.72. The total for Forest, which of course is the Southern Miss, is 186.21.
186?
186.21.
Googling, googling.
Forest is 66.08 and School District, I'm sorry, School District is 66.08. The county is 67, or the, the city is 67 and the county is 53.13. And then Octobah total is 154.74. So as you go through that, we are right in the middle between Southern Miss and, and Ole Miss. And then we're, ours is 30.13. And so again, we are not, we are not exorbitant in our ask from our, from our residents. And of all of us, you know, we're all going to get hit by it. We don't do this without some, some understanding that it impacts, everybody impacts commercial, it impacts residential. But, you know, I think the taxpayers are willing to pay for things if they get a return on the investment. And I think that their, our employees give them a return on the investment. And I would wholeheartedly support going forward sooner than October 1 for those, for those employee increases, so.
I'm pretty sure the people who were involved in the incident at, at the hotel that we viewed Tuesday night, where our policeman responded and resuscitated that drowning victim, aren't going to complain about what we pay our police.
Speaking of police.
Yes, sir.
I've got a police chart here. How many, how many do you actually show?
17, sir.
Yeah, 17. It's more than what you were saying.
Okay.
Considerably more.
So we're 10 short right this minute?
17.
17, 17 short.
Were you counting the five annexation and the two DUIs?
I'm, I'm counting total right now as we, as we're accurate now. The ARPA, probably dropping it down to 15 with the two.
All right.
If they're, if they're listed on there. Can you go 10 short?
And I guess, I guess my comment for, for those that want to delay it and think that the money's going to, that want to bet on the con, is what you want to do.
No, I'm not.
Yeah, no, no, no.
By putting off the two years, that makes up the bill.
But, but I, I, I think, I think that you, that, that you are to some extent betting on the con. And it's not an unreasonable bet. But is it a bet that you want to make with the citizens of Starkville's lives and safety?
Now, that's a little dramatic. What I'm saying.
It is a little dramatic, but so are those people that are in your ear about the tax increase.
We can get where we need to be without raising taxes, is what I'm saying. We can offer these raises and still not raise our taxes. There's enough wiggle room in any municipal budget to come up with that $300,000. I truly believe that. Those numbers are soft, they're not hard. Is it 17 officers as well?
It was 50.
I think that we owe it to the public, not just to take care of public safety, but be fiscally responsible. And I think the wiggle room is easily there to do this without, without having to raise a mill. That's just my opinion.
Well, I, I've got the same opinion. And also, you know, this is a reassessment year. So that's going to really be a double whammy because the, the taxes are going to go up because their property value increased. And then we're going to put another mill on top of that. So there's 15, and I'm not just looking for, for holes in the numbers. You know, if there's, if there's 15 employees here and that are budgeted for that, that he can't fill, he just can't, I mean, he can't do it even with the raises, then, then, then that budget is, it's over, it's over budget. Same thing over on, on the fire. If we got, if we're 15 or so short, we want to hire them, we want to give the raises. But if we can't fill them, then the, then the budget is just, it's out of whack because we're counting too much in, in the salaries on people we don't have. And, and how much of the raise is 1.74 million dollars? How much of that raise is included in, in your budget?
The entire amount.
The entire amount? Well, if I look at the, if I look at the spreadsheet, I've got the, the spreadsheet with, with the raises all the way down through there. And the raises includes seven police officers. And the budget affects us at $56,000. And then, and these 15 vacancies here are, are all budgeted into that, into that raise. So I got, I kind of got to go along a while and interrupt here. You know, there's, if you count that whole 1.74 million dollars, you should go back and look at that spreadsheet that Nav sent me because included in that are raises for a bunch of people we don't have. So if we don't have them, then why we, why we got them on the budget?
Well, I mean, I, I studied the budget and we got included, and where is that, 1.2 million? No, 1 million and $72,000 is contingency for salary increases for the employees that we'll have in, in, with the freezeouts, right?
Yes, sir.
So that, that would take care of, and that's budgeted in this budget. And this budget balances, I will make one. One small observation. We're increasing our fund balance by $338,000. If we don't, if we don't, if we take a mill out, we drop our fund, we balance. We just drop our fund balance from 2 million and $750,000 to back down to 2 million, 400-some thousand, which is what we're, we, is what we estimate we'll be in this fiscal year with. So we can do everything we're talking about, do. Create with, accounting for the freezeouts, the, the pay raises and everything. And if the no-tax guys over here, if we cut that mill tax out, their positions were satisfied, we still balance our budget and we still have 2.4 million.
What do you do next year? What do you do next year?
I don't know because you have 1.7 million dollars worth of, where are we going to get the money next year? And you don't, you certainly don't start going into rainy day funds, fund balances for that. So the answer, I'm not, I don't know. That's where I'll lean heavily on your.
So if you eliminate the $300,000 tax increase and, and you've got to backfill a half a million dollars in vacant frozen positions, you're starting next year at a minus $800,000. And where does, and where does that come from?
What gets back? I, I know that the 521, what else comes in there that, that backfills? What would be, what would be added? 1.7 is if we had everybody employed and we gave everybody a pay raise. All right, so, but how much will we pay this year with the freezeout stuff, with the pay raises and with existing people we have?
I'm not sure I'm following your question all the way. I am sorry. Talk to me like I'm a five-year-old.
No, if you're employees this year.
Yes.
And we're going to give, propose to give those people a raise. What was that, what's that?
What we hope, what we hope is that over the next six months, starting, starting in August, so four months into the fiscal year, that we've gotten these positions filled, that we've not lost more people, that we've filled all but a couple of police positions and eight firemen. That's, that's what our hope is. And, and yes, there's, the, the numbers are crystal ball numbers. And, and yes, there's, the, the numbers are crystal ball numbers. They're just everybody's best guess. What, what happens if sales tax numbers don't materialize like they have been being? And one of the things that I've been, one of the things I've been reading about future economy is that during the pandemic, people bought things. They bought things for their house, they bought air fryers, they bought desks and chairs. They bought things because they were stuck at home and they were buying things. And we saw our sales tax numbers going up. What, what places like Walmart and Target and other places are finding themselves in the position of right now is that they have bought their inventory based on past purchasing patterns. And suddenly, people are not spending their money on things anymore. They're spending their money on going out to eat, going on vacation, doing other things like that. So those are, those are hard things to quantify. And it's hard to know how that's going to impact, impact us. It's just hard to know these sorts of things. But I do, I do think that you're delaying the inevitable if you don't do the tax increase this year. And you are setting, setting us up for potentially having to dip into our fund balance over the course, course of the year to sustain our operations.
But what, what you're doing with this, this budget here is we're replenishing our fund balance by three hundred and thirty some thousand, which is equivalent of about a mill, right?
Well, and Alderman, Alderman Beatty, the, the truth of the matter is, if you look at the detail in those fund balance, we don't ever touch those numbers. It's sort of a balancing mechanism. So we don't ever actually spend that fund balance. We budget it as revenue, we budget it as an expense, but we don't, we don't, we don't actually touch it. So look at, look at, look, look, don't, don't worry about the budget piece of it. Look at current year operations, if you go all the way down to the ending fund balance, our year-to-date activity, zero. So we've not touched our fund balance.
But I was looking, I didn't see the latest thing, but the one I had, I've been working on is FY twenty two in two point four one one million.
And it's, it's a budget, it's a budget, it's a budget balancing mechanism. What, what really...
But we can't budget for any more surplus at the end of the year than what we have right now.
No, 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 we, we...
Stay with us, do that, will we?
We will adjust our fund balance based on how this year ends. And we think that this year will end with, with a positive amount. If we give salary increases earlier in the year, it's possible that we'll be back at that two point four. So yes, you'll, you'll, your, your fund balance can go up and down based on your operations. But we don't typically spend that money. We don't budget to spend that money.
Alderman.
Yeah, I want to reiterate, I'm for the raises, but I am very much against taxing our citizens on what ifs. We, it was framed by a previous board that we put a two-mill tax on for COVID. The money kept coming in, those two mills are still on there. Now, whether that was the real reason we put those two mills on there, you can debate. But that's what the public perception was, and those two mills are still on the tax rolls. What do we tell people that we did it for?
Well, actually, it was only one mill for COVID, the other mill was for the bill grant, and that was, that was my narrative. And the reality is, it was more for the police body cams than it was for that.
But that's what the public thinks. I hear that a lot.
And, and the one mill, the one mill covered the four hundred and ninety seven thousand dollar, helped to cover the four hundred and seventy nine ninety seven,
I'm not sure, raises that we gave last year.
But we're sort of, through the pandemic, but if, so if we say we're, I think anytime we say we're taxing for X, if that X goes away, so should that tax.
Well, okay, let's say we took away last year, we, we had taken away the one-mill COVID tax. We've still got the bill grant to deal with. Let's say we had taken away the one-mill COVID tax. Where then do you get the money to, to do the pay raises that we did last year? We'd add a mill back. So we gave it back and we took it back when we raised salaries last year.
You do that when you do bonds, Jeffrey. And when bond debt is retired, sometimes mill rates come on. Even public sector, private sector, and in this part of public sector, costs go up for us, workers' comp goes up. I understand how that works. I disagree with the principle. On those two mills, I promise you that our increased cost in our operational stuff has soaked up the, you know it's soaked up. Well, let's tell the people that. Well, I'm not, no one's, it was newspaper, newspaper not here.
Shocking.
They're not, they're not report reporters.
We'll get, we'll get it out. I mean, we understand, we understand what you're saying and understand that sometimes that narrative is hard to get out there. But absolutely, you know, it's just like this coming year, we know the oil's going up, we know gas is going up, we know all those things are going up, and then we're going to have to deal with them. Now, we've got salaries that need to go up in order for us to be competitive. And all of that is, is the things that we are, are having to factor in. And I disagree. I do think you bet on the come on almost anything you do because we don't know for sure what our revenues are going to be, we don't know for sure what our expenses are going to be. So we, we do a guess. That's what we're doing. We're guessing based on what we've experienced over the last, well, let's throw twenty out, but over the last four or five years. Each, each time you do a budget, you're guessing, you know, you're guessing what's going to happen to you.
I agree with that. I think the wiggle room's going to do without a tax, and I'm finished with that.
Okay. Vice Mayor, you haven't had a chance to say anything. Do you wish to add to this, to this dialogue?
lively conversation.
Thanks for the recognition, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to appreciate the budget share for her very meticulous thorough work and service appreciation for all that she's passed on and is doing. I did not seek recognition because I was trying to ensure I heard the entirety of her presentation and listened to the two department heads, being the Chief of Police and the Chief of Fire and Heard from the Finance, Officer Mr. Corbin, the standing man, Mr. Greg from the Human Resource Department. Certainly, when you come to decisions with respect to mileage and budget, a lot of factors, Mayor, have to be considered. We have to look at the totality of the facts and the circumstances. And each year, the budget certainly brings up different facts and factors. We are a growing city. We have a lot of needs. There are a lot of things that we, as a municipality, are attempting to consider as we factor into what do we do next. We, I have a jar to the board that is our decision now. We have index additional territory. And as our city attorney knows, we have a certain legal obligation to perform provided services. And we often say that we'll make every effort we reasonably can within five years. And you have to deal with that before this honorable court as related to the very expanded annexation that occurred during the latter part of nineteen ninety eight in October, November. And so when he goes back to court the next time, then he has to address those factors. And when you look at budgeting, Police Chief talks about, Mayor, this expanded compensation necessary. We have to have the police officers to go out there to serve and protect. We've got to keep our city safe. That's what attracts people here. They often say, you know, we don't allow crime to, to claim our residents here, cannot come through here. We have to keep a safe community. Thanks for the Chief of Police. And this takes money to keep good police officers out there. We put the money into a mystery attorney and they go and they relocate firemen. And of course, we, like Mayor said, we want to do what is reasonable. We can't compel people with the coffee bill of Tennessee, but we want to do what we can. So with all that being said, you know, we decided from a policy perspective, we'll look at the Stennis Institute. And that's what we're, we're going by now in the sense, the raises are just, you know, what they are. I mean, these are experts. So Mayor, with that being said, the question is, how can we get these police officers and these firemen in competitive wages? And, and the questions come up about the ending fund balance, that, that never fails. They're very proper questions. And, and our expert from Watkins Ward and Stafford say, you know, we want to have at least about eight to twelve percent of the entire budget amount is ending fund balance. And, and so, you know, and I've seen it under, you know, my time, less than a half million dollars. And so, and we know what happens if you don't have the proper ending fund balance. And so if you don't have that extra three hundred thousand dollars in there for the ending fund balance, then what if we have some type of major cut match report, do we do then? So the bottom line is, Mayor, you know, I'm, you know, everybody in this room attorney, you know, they know where I stand in terms of my past philosophy and my philosophy. But, you know, we have to make those decisions for, from a governmental perspective. And as we govern our, you know, individualized, from a family perspective. So the question is now, as I conclude, Mayor, is where do we get the money from? Where do we get the money from to hire these police officers? We've got to have them out there in that area. The city is growing. Where do we get the firemen from? They got to have equipment. We got to have competitive salaries. And these expenses are exceeding our revenue. And so we cannot turn a clock back or turn on the annexation. So we got to fund it. We don't have the money on hand. But the expenses are greater than that. So it's just hard for me to conceive how we're going to not have a millage increase. Of course, you know, I am not one to consistently support a millage increase. You know, I, I don't like millage increases, Mayor. But if I have to vote on it right this minute, if I got a chance to vote on it right now, you're calling the roll.
I promised not to do that, Vice Mayor.
I want to put it in a proper perspective. Only because I'm taking so much time, I just want to kind of give my experience in the background. But, but I know you're not here, but if you were to call the roll right now, I think from everything that I know, to maintain that proper ending fund balance. And I voted, you know, in the past to delay it another time, but we've got a lot of projects on the table. We have a lot of projects on the table. And without the millage increase, we're going to lose a lot of employees. There are going to be a lot of things that are not going to be able to get done. And, you know, I'm not just one that's for a millage increase. Attorney, you, you've been with us since two thousand and nine, Mayor's been with me since two thousand and five. So she knows how conservative I am. And the gentleman from over there, the former office from Mr. Smithland, he's been there with me, he knows it. I mean, I'm not one, I'm with the Bob Smith group, okay? He, 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 he operated him with me. So, but, you know, I'm, I'm going to have to support it. I'm going to have to support it, given all, I want to rehash further what I've heard. But, you know, it's a very conservative decision, in my opinion, Mr. Attorney. You know, I just tell the people, you know, we, I look at it, we've got to help police officers. In order to help police officers, we've got to have competitive salaries. We've got to have the firemen in order to have competitive salaries. And then we have other staff members who are urgent and necessitous to do the work to make their job work. So, and then, and when we look at raises, we cannot just give it to a certain segment of the population. I've been there and done that. And we're going to have to treat, and the best thing to do is we're going to roll these raises out here, treat everybody as similar, that's similar situated, meaning that we need to give raises to all involved. So Mayor, I took the time to say, I wanted to share my experience with folks, the shortcut in it. So, but since you involved me in this, and I'm certain I'm glad that you did recognize me on it. But Mayor, for all those reasons, you know, and even with my conservative background, you know, it, it appears to me from listening to the budget here, and I've looked at all these details while I got here, I looked over every bit of paperwork that's come out. So if I had to vote for it today, I'm going to vote for it when it comes up. I'm going to vote for the one-mill increase. And, and we've done a very conservative job. We're keeping the mill rate low. And every board has been very consistent. This is my eighth term here. So we've, we've done a very good job. As far as just never increase the mileage, but I think conservatively, you know, I'm going to have to vote for it. Because there's no other way we can get the revenue, Mayor, to get what we need to build, so I yield.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I appreciate that and appreciate your input. Mr. Rob.
So I got to go back to my day job, but I don't want to make it look like I'm stomping out of the meeting.
I'll stomp with it. I need to eat something.
I disagree with how we're going to get there, but I respect y'all. So please don't construe me having to get back to my day job. So that's it. I'm taking my folder and I'm going home.
I'll walk out with you. That way...
Y'all have a, a good weekend, and if you hear some screaming, send someone out to rescue me from...
All right. We're about to run through the budget. I mean, run through the, run through the agenda, sir. Thank you, Vice Mayor. We're going to run through the agenda here real quick, and we will have our, our public hearing on Tuesday. Then we'll have the next public hearing on the sixteenth, and we will adopt the budget however it comes out at that point in time. So we've had a, we've had a good, thorough, robust discussion. So let's go over our agenda here real quick. We've got three sets of minutes. Mr. Lymer, have you looked at those?
They are ready to roll.
They are ready to go? Consent on those? All right. I'll make some mayor's comments about the national night out. And also, I'll mention while I'm here, Mr. Kimp told me this morning that the Utilities Department got an award for being community engagement, I believe is how it was labeled. So we will talk about that on Tuesday, and I'll give some more information. But just as a, as a quick mention, here's our first public hearing on the budget and the tax mileage. First item on here is going to be under Mayor's business. It's going to be consideration of the Main Street redevelopment and redesign project that we just looked at. So we will take a look at that under, at the board meeting.
What was the intent of?
Sorry?
The downtown?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
And what, what is the intent of what we will be asking?
For us to, for us to bless the plan they just showed us and have them move forward. Okay. The three MOUs, Chris, speak to those real quick.
Yeah, we're still working on those, at least an hour, but we will get those ready for Tuesday. And I think that they'll, I don't see any reason that there shouldn't be a consent item at this time.
Okay. Everybody okay with that? Do consent for those? Okay. All right. Other than that, it should be fairly light. We've got engineering, a low quote from construction for installation of concrete at Montgomery Street, which is a way to, when we did an overlay on South Montgomery, it created this very steep transition. So this is for us to come in and create a transition that works for that particular homeowner. It just affected that one homeowner. Is that correct, Cody?
It's one option.
Okay. Consent for that one? Okay. Let's see, it's claims dock at Fire Department, Ms. Malone to attend an association conference, consent for that. Human Resources, we've got authorization to hire a maintenance worker, another temporary maintenance worker. We've got sanitation department and this promotion in the Fire Department to sergeant. And transfer Ms. Williams over to capital projects manager at the Utilities Department. And then part-time receptionist hire for City Hall. Consent for all those items? Okay. And then under Parks, we've got an additional quote from Four County on the underground electric. And that is a, that is a element, that's to take underground to the maintenance building and pay them for that. Consent for that. Police Department, Chief Ballard wants to go gallivanting off to the FBI National Academy where... Yeah, I see you coming in. Consent for that one. Marvin Hughes to, to attend an incident response thing, and that's to be reimbursed to us, so consent for that one. Sanitation Department, Mr. Smiley wants to declare the Mack front load garbage truck as surplus and advertise it for sale. Consent for that. And then we have three for utilities. Emergency rental of a three hundred ton crane, which we do not need to purchase, we just need to rent for installation. Consent for that one. Electric division, Chris, do we need to do any more than that under emergency? Will we need to?
No, the language speaks for itself. No, they're not.
Just making sure. Then the Sierra, the declaration and accept a quote from Allen Edwards Body Shop for Water Division trust. All right. There we go. And no executive session. So thank you all for staying longer.
Thank you for the pizza.
Pizza and salad. You got it.